To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Do you mind? All meeting in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir.
Any discussion? No changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. Prove the minutes with nine-nine.
I read through a map and they looked trying to meet, so I'll go ahead and submit.
Back to that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. All being concerned, they beat you down the door again this morning.
That's a good thing.
Okay. It says to approve you're here, but he's not here. I guess you're up, boy.
I guess I'm up. I don't know. He said he was gonna be here, but I haven't talked to him this morning. Um, we have been here a couple of weeks ago and talked to you about some of the issues we're having in the jail, trying to employ, um, trying to get qualified applicants. And, uh, I understand we've made kind of a unique request, you know, partway through the budget here requesting to see if there would be a possibility to try to create another full-time position, uh, hoping that that helps to stabilize and get some, um, decent applicants for the jail. So, we just, we just wanted to talk to you a little bit. I think Dean came up, Dean and I met last week and kinda came up with some numbers on kinda typically what it costs to get a new jailer up and going, um, so we're just gonna kinda touch base with you on that and just kinda hopefully answer any questions that you might have. Currently, um, the way we generally like to have on our jail staff is currently we have three full-time positions that have been approved for. Uh, we have three part-time positions, um, that we usually try to keep at less than sixty hours a week. And then we had a fourth part-time position that at one point was just as, as needed type thing. We'd just call them in when somebody was sick or whatever. Um, when I took over back in February, we had an extreme, um, difficulty finding anybody to do that call-in basis thing. One of, the gal that had been doing that, she accepted one more permanent part-time positions and it was very tough for us to find somebody to do the as-needed type thing. So, we were trying to man the fork with the three full-timers and the three part-timers. Um, since that time, we've had a couple, couples that have resigned. We've had, um, uh, one of them, one of our full-timers just quit because she was having some health issues. Um, one of our part-timers was, and that's, she's on the agenda to get, um, to get moved up from part-time up to full-time. So, we're just, you know, we're just really struggling. I think the last time when I had the ads in the paper, I had taken two applicants. And by the time that afternoon, I went to, to start calling them to line up interviews, the one gal took her name out. She had been offered a full-time position at the hospital, so I had one to choose from. Um, so, and I know like what we talked before, you know, the unemployment rate is really low right now and, um, you know, and I'm, just to be completely honest with you, it's just really tough for us to compete to find the right person that's willing to come in. And we're expecting them to work nights, weekends, and holidays. We call in on a moment's notice and we're not giving them any benefits. And, you know, we're just, um, you know, the, the staff is burned out because now we're just forcing twelve-hour shifts down their throat. They've been having to work days what would normally be their scheduled days off. Um, just this last weekend, I, I've been working since two this morning because we didn't have anybody to work the twelve-hour overnight shift this weekend. Reached out to bordering counties, um, Cassuth said that they were short. They didn't have anybody to help us. Wright County didn't have anybody, uh, Webster didn't have anybody. Ultimately, last Friday, I reached out to Powhatan County and they did have a jailer that did come down this weekend and helped out. But she could only move from six to midnight. So, then we had myself, um, I came in and one of the other deputies, we had to do from midnight until six in the morning on Saturday and Sunday. Um, so, of course, that's taking me off the road and, I mean, it's just creating a problem. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't need to bore you guys with how it works, but generally we, we, our full-timers work ten-hour shifts. We've had to move our part-timers down to work at nine-hour shifts so that we can keep them below the sixty hours. Uh, we try to have some shift overlap in the afternoons, usually from either eleven in the morning or noon until either three or four in the afternoon because that's when we're doing commissaries and we have visitations during that time. And we have two jailers to be shuffling inmates out of their cells and so that they can do visitations or they can be up doing exercise times, which they're entitled to do twice a week. So, um, and then at night, we generally haven't had anybody, uh, we try, uh, we, in perfect world, we tried to have an hour overlap between eight and nine at night and the evenings so that they could finish up paperwork and the document, documentation and stuff. But when we move the part-timers down to nine-hour shifts, then usually it's, one's walking out the other, out the doors, one's coming in. So, again, I, again, Dean and I both acknowledge that this is an unusual request, you know, partway in the middle of a budget year. But I guess we're just really at wits' end as far as trying to fill a position and, um, you know, we're just really hoping that if we could get the possibility to open up a full-time position with benefits, it would bring us some stability. We'd be able to get someone in, we'd be able to retain them. You know, the other thing, there's so many little things with the jail as far as like, um, you know, commissary money. They, they have money coming in, but the, the jail's selling commissary to the inmates and things. And so, we have jailers that are kind of in charge of that stuff. So, they kind of, one of them's kind of in charge of commissary, one's in charge of stamp money, one's in charge of phone card money. And so, by having the turnover that we've had, especially with our full-time staff, you know, we're not able to divide up those tasks and duties. So, we've got one of our full-timers who's been there the longest. She's kinda taken all that on her own because she kinda has an idea of what's going on with that stuff. So, again, by hoping, hoping that if we could create a full-time position, we're just hoping that that could bring some more stability, someone who's gonna be a longer, you know, more of a, a career type thing versus a job, uh, reduce some of the burnout, that type of stuff. So, again, I don't sit here, you know, looking forward to asking for this, you know. I know Dean and I had talked several months ago with this as something we're gonna maybe try to bring up at, um, budget time. But I think, you know, we're just of the opinion now, we had to ask now and see if we could get you guys gotten on board with it. And if not, we just have to do the best we can and move forward, but we're just hoping we can do something now.
Was this an email, Dean, that you sent with the fee, the training fee?
Yes.
I got it.
Yeah. It's on my computer.
I've looked at my copy.
Yeah, we got, gave up about six thousand dollars just to get this new started.
So, by the time we trained someone, we put uniforms, we sent them down to the academy, and then they turn around and get offered another fifty cents or a dollar.
And they're gone.
And we've spent six thousand dollars trying to continue to keep them.
Yep.
We're either at a point where we're gonna have to raise or do something so that they'll stay.
Yep. You know, and if...
And within, within the first year of their employment, we have to get them through the academy and get them trained and everything, so.
Yeah, 'cause they have to go to a forty-hour certification school. And in that forty-hour certification school, not only do they have to learn all about the ins and outs of running a jail and, and the laws and regulations that go into that, they have to be trained to be able to serve medication to the inmates. That's a class that they have to go to. And then one of the evenings, they have to get certified in CPR, in first aid, in AED if they don't already have that. So, and then, you know, again, um, you know, typically, we try to have a month's training for each employee so that they're teamed up with one of the jailers. And I know that's been kinda frustrating for them is it seems like they get somebody in and they go through the whole process with them, trying to get them trained and stuff. And then pretty soon here, we're starting the process all over again. So, they felt like they just got done going through all this stuff and then they gotta go through it again.
Well, and that's a cost too. This is just your startup cost. That doesn't count your training cost. Your people to work with and, you can double that.
Well, I think that's included in that, yeah, that, in that three thousand dollars, that kinda counts on the, you know, it takes to the, you know.
The training.
We're, we're double them up.
Oh, where you're doubling, okay.
Yeah.
This cost would be relatively the same for a part-time or full-time position, yeah?
Yeah, and if act, if, well, yes. The cost would be the same, but it's actually even, it's, it's actually even longer with a part-timer because we can only have a part-timer working three days a week to come in to actually learn because we're getting, we're falling underneath, trying to keep them underneath the sixty hours in a two-week timeframe. Whereas a part, or a full-timer, we can throw them in at forty hours and we can, we can get them up and going faster.
Right.
But your startup cost is...
The same. Except the problem with the part-time is they, they, they leave. And then you're doing it over again.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there, there's less incentive for them to stay. You know, it's harder for us to, to maybe divide out some of these extra duties and responsibilities to part-timers and stuff just because we know the stability isn't there with them. You know, it's, and again, it's, I guess it's to the point too where, um, you know, if we have good employees and stuff, at some point, we wanna treat them right too. We can only, we can only work them to, you know, expect this much from them. And again, basically, all we're giving them is a pat on the back at the end of the day, so.
Do we have fees for the jail?
Yes. Uh, as far as...
For an inmate?
Yes, there are, like, if, they're on, uh, work release, there's a fee for that. If they've been assigned, uh, like, mid-time, so if the court asks for them to spend two days in jail or whatever, they're supposed to pay that upfront before they can serve the time, and that's fifty dollars a day. Which, again, by the time you're looking at...
Lower enough.
The, the money that's coming in, it doesn't come in, we're supposed to offsetting...
Well, it isn't like we're running super eight.
No, no.
Then we can raise our fee twelve bucks and try to cover our...
Exactly, yeah. We're somewhat limited to that. And we can only get a lot out of a turnover. I mean, a lot of, you know. Honestly, a lot of the people that are coming in, they just don't have the money to do that kinda stuff, you know, to pay that stuff. And, you know, so there's only so much pressure we can put on someone. And that's a whole nother process to try to get compensated for that.
Yeah, 'cause eventually they gotta serve their time even if they don't have their money.
Yep. Yep.
Um, we could, but we, uh, we filed with the first office for, uh, to get a refund.
'Cause you guys also have charges, dispatchers, we had discussion on that. So, this is the first time you've really come in front of us with, uh, full-time on the jailer? Have we visited previously?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking we probably...
It sounds like it's a vicious circle.
Yes, and, and...
It's a vicious circle.
That brings up another topic. So, you know, some of the, some of the jailers, of course, there's been some, they've opened up some more full-time positions for the dispatchers, excuse me. So, of course, we still all work underneath the same roof and that's caused some hard feelings between the two divisions, you know, that, you know, hey, you know, they got to, you know, get some full-time dispatchers and here we are, working from fifty feet away from them and here we're running with only three and three. So, that's kinda caused some issues that I've heard about more than once. Not gonna lie. So, you know, and, and I guess, you know, I try, you know, I didn't, you know, this is not easy to come in here and just make it sound like we're just asking for everything, you know, because that's not the way generally I like to work. But at some point, you know, we also have to understand this is becoming incredibly frustrating and we're beating our heads against the wall. And, and, you know, we're putting Band-Aids over huge wounds and whenever we give them a wound a chance to get healed up, at some point, we're ripping it off when somebody else quits and we're starting all over from scratch again. And I guess we're just looking to try to make this more of a permanent solution, you know, run, run it a little more professionally than maybe what it has been hopefully.
Budget-wise, I'm sure you don't, won't have enough money to cover this position, would you?
Uh, it's pretty close.
'Cause I know it's...
That's good to hear.
It's close within the building. If we're doing a tallying project, if they say we're close, well, we're within half-mile of finishing, so we just cut it off there. I don't wanna do that, but we gotta figure out, and I don't wanna look at Peggy's. Peggy, do you have any more magic money that we can stretch a dollar and try to find a dollar?
There's an amendment coming up in October.
I see that. So, I think we have to visit because, like you say, all we're doing is having a revolving door. And we really can't afford to have a deputy say, you know, I'm tired of this too.
Right.
Well, that's not really the deputy's responsibility.
No.
With that said, yeah. And we had discussion previous that the out is a differential between part-time and full-time, but it, it's just that differential that would be the difference in the budget. Because, you know, the part-time, there's still a cost, you know, associated. And so, it's not like it's from zero to whatever.
You're just basically changing the part-time to a full-time. You're not adding...
The body amounts to...
Other position, you're just...
Not at this point, we're just...
So, you're picking, they could pick up a few more hours.
So, and it's just, it's the insurance because again, when, before, when I called a couple of them that had initially made application and stuff, you know, the one gal in particular that we were very interested in, she, she said, I'd come to work for you a minute, but she said, my husband's getting ready to retire and I gotta have health insurance. She said, I have to turn, you know, for six more years.
It's set up for everybody wants.
Yep. And she said, I just can't risk going without it.
Down in Guthrie, they're trying to get a new jail and they're having to farm their prisoners out and they don't have the ability because everybody around them is full or like we are. And we, they don't, they have to take them a long ways. Well, then you have to go get them.
Yeah.
So...
I was saying like in Warren County, you know, they're supposed to build this new, new, uh, courthouse. Courthouse and jail and everything. But I'm outside.
And we did get to, Wright County did have us house one of their females a couple of weeks ago for about a week. Just 'cause they were so full, they were reaching out for us and fortunately, we were able to make it work for them. But, you know, again, we have to be pretty selective when, 'cause we've had other counties that have reached out, asked to house when they were full, to ask for us, but again, part of the, you know, we have to be very careful and selective on the inmates that they give us because a lot of times, yeah, we have one jailer on duty and if we've got a problem child back there, you know, it's, we can't have that one person focused on one inmate all the time, so, you know.
Question, on, I know it's not the super eight, but if you get an inmate from another county, do you get paid for that?
Yes.
So, if you have the ability to take in an inmate with a full staff, it is actually money that you wouldn't otherwise have. I mean, I'm trying to put a positive spin on it. If you have a real up and running functioning jail that you're not constantly fighting like Coria's been, then it's a benefit, not that you're soliciting other counties' prisoners, but if you do get one, you do get paid.
Yeah, over twenty years ago, when I first started as the sheriff, you know, Hamilton County did have a jail. Uh, Cassuth County had a four- or six-person jail up there and Wright County, I think they had, you know, maybe a ten-to, you know. So, we, we were raising a lot of income back then, you know. I think one year we brought in like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But since then, Cassuth County's built their own jail, Wright County's built a bigger jail, Hamilton County's built a jail. So, you know, that's kinda dried up, so.
Is it ever gonna be a moneymaker? No.
No.
It's never gonna be a moneymaker, it's just helps offset it a little bit and...
Right. You know, you have a facility that needs to operate and it is not operating efficiently and it's that vicious circle effect. I don't know when, there's no action on this, but...
And, and there is a, you know, I guess, the last thing I just wanna point out is the safety part of it too. So, if we, if we have people that don't have experience and don't have the training and they're working shifts by themselves and they're dealing with inmates, you know, that, that's also...
What if something happens?
That, if, what if something happens? 'Cause we have someone, we're, we're putting them at, we're putting them to work with people sometimes that maybe aren't quite prepared for it. 'Cause we're so desperate trying to cover shifts and trying to get them to work and do stuff by themselves and...
How many inmates do we have this week?
Seven. We have seven over the weekend.
If we would've shipped them out, the least amount, we would've paid us three hundred and fifty dollars a day to house them somewhere else. If they're charging us fifty dollars, some, some of them...
They're charged more.
Yeah, some of these are charging sixty and seventy.
You know, and we do lockdown, the lockdown for jails at ten-thirty at night. You know, so I've always said in my perfect utopia, if we could have a second, you know, if we could have two jailers working till like eleven o'clock, that way they get their, their evening meds passed. And I'm not, we're not asking for that now, I'm just saying in my utopia, what I would say is, you know, if we could have two people work until ten, or until like eleven or midnight, that way they get their evening med, medications passed, they get locked down at ten-thirty, usually by midnight, that's when they're starting to fall asleep. Um, and that's where it'd be a lot easier if we only have one jailer working in nighttime hours when they're sleeping and they're locked down in their cell, they really can't cause much problems. So, when somebody gets arrested and, isn't that, you know, if the city arrests somebody and they're, they're a problem child, they're pulling us off the streets to come in and be their, you know, to help them in jail and stuff too, so, I mean...
Well, it costs you the part-time, costs part-time that same cost, so it makes sense to just go to another full-time. But you could spend three or four times that. You had three or four part-timers. And one quits, say one quits every six months while you're still out that body, so it just makes sense to go full-time.
If you have a budget amendment process coming along here, would we need to look at adding the sheriff's budget then?
Let's see how close Dean's really is close.
But he says close, which is better than far away. Give us, give us some numbers together.
Well, I think I got my monthly report. I think it's fifteen, sixteen-something. I think I'm down at eleven-something, so...
Okay.
I'm, I'm below right now.
But it isn't a monetarily huge deal, not what some of the numbers have looked at already.
Well, yeah, the insurance and that's gonna be...
I believe you have to, I think you have to move forward and get the part-time person. I mean, there's just, otherwise, we're gonna draw this... Full, excuse me, go from part-time to full-time is what I meant to say, full-time person. Because otherwise, we're just, we're just gonna keep doing this.
That, and, yeah, and that's what we're just asking now for this now and then we can address the rest of it later. It's just, this is, I guess, we feel like it's just, we can't just stand back and, you know, keep, keep doing the same thing again.
No.
Well, we'll, yeah, like you said, it's, it's the biggest thing, it's the safety thing too, and that's what you gotta look out for.
What do you wish to do, any motion?
I think, I think the discussion, and I think you're on the right path, and I think it creates a full-time position.
Yeah, bring, bring that to us at one of our next meetings and we'll...
Do what you gotta do.
And then give it to you guys for approval.
Yeah.
And you mentioned number, funny.
I'll get home to you later, Dean, we'll see about. As long as we're doing the budget amendment, we might as well.
If she slams the phone in your ear, that's probably not as close as you thought you were.
I know it.
Before we walk in your office and she's wielding a hatchet.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, personally, thank you very much. And thanks, Cory.
She helped us a lot.
Yep, thank you.
Could've been worse, like, I saw in the papers, Story County has thirty-six or thirty-eight over the weekend, so that would be a hard fix to try to show thirty-six. Hopefully those roll Hawk-Eyes, man. I hope they didn't wreck their weekend.
We have fourteen is our capacity. You, you asked earlier, uh, right now, I think we had seven over the weekend. I think we lost one on Sunday, he served his time and was released. I'd say that's right around where we're, our average is.
Yeah, it's about seven.
Yeah, five, six, seven, somewhere in that area is where I would say we're pretty close. I mean, we've had times where, here a month or so ago, we were full for like two weeks. And then we might have some times where, you know, we might be down with one or two. But that just seems like...
All right, all right.
Thank you very much.
All right, get it, you're up.
I can talk to you.
All right, see you.
Barbie.
Missed it all afternoon. I'm here to ask you to make some taxes, what the city's been charged and add to the tax certificate for some land that's been mowing for quite some time. Um, first of all, I do have copies, if you want copies of everything.
So, these vacant lots or the...
All these. Well, this one is vacant, it's been there a long time. The city's been mowing it for quite some time and we've been charging, mowing to it. And now we'd like to, there's a new program coming out, well, it's not new, it's called Housing Three-Sixty. It's where you can take your lots that are cleared and you can put them on this website. And if somebody wants to buy a house and they want to locate in Livermore, we will give them the lot. We will look, look tip and we will get the utility stuff to them so we can get that house. But we need to get these lots cleared in the city's name and then we can put them in. This is Bill Hanson's house. We, um, this one is, the fact, we are going to tear this down and put money into that. We paid the taxes last year, but we missed the deadline by whatever date and we got another twenty-dollar fee on that one. I'd like that one removed. And then the last one is Hula Erdman. Now, that's, that's Hula Erdman, the twenty-dollar one. Bill Hanson is the one that will be taken down. And this is Bill Hanson's house.
Oh, these are all copies, okay. I just looked at the first one, passed it over the stack.
Which one is that?
That second one.
I mean, that one.
Maybe they're coming in.
They're coming down the road.
Okay.
So, I'm going to do a base of taxes, so we do not have to pay them as a city. Especially on Bill Hanson's, we'll be putting all that money into it to tear it down. Uh, Hula Erdman is going to stay in the city. We're gonna have to remove the trailer, the trees, take care of all that. She gave that to the city and that's only twenty dollars. And we did pay last year. Maybe we should do one at a time. Let's start with, maybe have a next one.
All right, I didn't have that, but that's okay, I can...
Yeah, three total.
Three total.
Three total, got them.
Okay, start with the one that Eric has on top, the twenty dollars. Hula Erdman. Do you hear what it say? Just a base of taxes. There's that old trailer house on it that we've gotta pay to get rid of. I got the trees down, yeah, people wanna take it, move it around town, but now if they allow tractors in town, they're like, gone.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's the first one.
Okay. We need separate notions on all of these?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Everything's good, you guys, yeah?
Yep.
Yep, here's one.
Typical?
Yep. Yeah, the second one is Bill Hanson. That would be the, the two hundred and eighth, I believe, too. That's the one, we already put five hundred dollars in the taxes on it, just to exam. Plus to take it down and all that, and all the legal fees, 'cause that took them two years to get it to this point.
Not the vacant lot?
No, that has a house on it that has more raccoons moving in it than Mark Farm does.
Neighbors appreciate that.
Oh, my gosh, he's a...
I'm not familiar with that one.
Well, maybe once you tear it down, where the raccoons go, they go here.
Hopefully, you'll be trapped in town or whatever.
I'm not, where is this located?
Bill Hanson, the Foxess Avenue, is right across from Bob and I mean Colin, the next corner lot thing.
Okay.
He just moved out one day and moved into a different house, so I mean, dishes in the sink. Amazing how people are.
And you're...
There is, but always a...
You're down, you're in a condo.
And the last one is the toilet girl. There's three lots, they're total, or just somebody we believe bought one by mistake at a tax sale. So, that's still lingering out there, but there's three lots altogether. And those three lots, then we've just mowed them, we've got to stop assessing them to the taxes and then, uh, but...
The lot's already...
To the taxes till we get that one, which will be a year down the road, I think. The third lot, somebody bought by mistake or can I get that one now?
Um, I would take it now, 'cause there's a county health certificate, they never paid the taxes, stolen back to tax sale.
Oh, so we'd like that, we'd like that one too.
Okay, and that's no real Mr. Martin.
Then all of those are empty lots, yeah, we've been mowing them for a long time. They mowed them for a long time until they were in Minnesota and should've just did it.
Finally gave up on the...
She gave up.
The whole value of them.
Yeah, she gave, she wanted to move trailer homes in there, she had this idea, that idea, and then finally, they've just retired and let it be gone. And that's it today.
I'll make a motion for a bill of taxes page on the first, we'll send it, you given us.
And the sales tax, the assignment of the three, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Did, uh, while you guys are here, did eight, was it AJ, uh, Flurry that was here earlier? Did he get, he was, was any waiting on some paperwork or something up that way?
He had stopped and talked to me, I think he got the, he has information on it, but...
That's far.
No, that's far. I'm not sure where he is, but he...
They gave the sales tax certificate on that?
He didn't acquire it, there wasn't a certificate because of the, the suspended taxes. It was kind of a security deal.
Well, that's, I wondered if it never...
Uh, they're cleaning the building up and cleaning that all out. The house is in there and they're in limbo, they don't wanna do anything to the house until they know how far, because...
I haven't...
And I don't know if the house needs to be removed or not, I mean...
You know, the, the Humboldt County Housing has a program where if you tear down a house and build a new house in the same location, you get seventy-five hundred bucks towards the cost of tearing down the old one.
Seventy-five hundred?
Yes, I believe so.
Maybe raccoons would...
The issue is you have...
He said he's never been in and out of a house so fast, yes, that's just... Oh, my gosh, he wore a mask and he couldn't, he still smell it through the mask, you know. There's probably dead ones in there too, you know.
Oh, I'm sure, sure.
Another question? Pioneer?
Oh, how is Pioneer doing?
I went to the care center.
Did you go to the boat room?
Did he really?
I didn't.
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna be a part-time thing, I tried to get that phone and, and, um, found out that I could...
Think I'm gonna go down that, yeah.
All the way.
Hi. Got a person's thing.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have took you off, huh?
No, that's fine, now, so it's interesting, we're gonna try to do, take care of that, we got the, the alleys all done, and the next thing is we'll sell them. Park, election's coming up, we might have a new mayor.
They're gonna rename that town, Steinfield.
They're gonna what?
Rename that town, Steinfield.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for helping.
Just putting it on, uh, on that.
Drainage district.
Yeah, I've, we'll, I gotta, I'm gonna check him into that, and, uh, let's see what we can come up with.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's time to get it done, get the whole closed, well, I think they closed the whole, but, for some of the problem, we just need to...
The DCLs of the, the, fine, I, I put it much there, but we'll get it taken care of.
Well, we'll take care of part of it, they'll take care of that little blue, but the rest of it, they don't want to, and...
We'll get it, we'll get it figured out. I'm, but just so you know, I'm fully familiar with that, but I saw it this past week, otherwise, I probably would've talked to you then.
Yeah, no, that's those guy figures though, when you got around to it, we...
But maybe talking to you, yeah.
Okay, yeah, you, you know, we need that.
Working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. You number JT, pack one.
Pack one. We, that's, uh...
But, drain, when the drains are making a lot of noise, it's...
Second.
Okay. We'll give you a minute. We're late anyway.
Oh, I do have one.
I heard he quit, quit cooking, so it must be time for coffee.
My green tea this morning isn't being...
It's making...
No, it's not, not at all.
Oh.
Might be kind of weak.
Did you make it?
I just got a text, my daughter-in-law's a chick, she rushes all night to...
Do the ice go bothering you?
So, she just, she's getting my call later.
So, when she gets the call, you hit the sound, huh?
Yep, I got the, I got my, she said, you better pack your bags this weekend, so I got that.
Jump in the car, dig on.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing's bothering.
But she said it's tough.
Not that I'm an expert in cataract, you break more than one, I'm myself after a week.
But Ashley, due days twenty-third, but she's been having contractions.
Sorry to hear that.
She was hoping to make it till tomorrow, with the doctor.
You give them, you put them drops in them?
So, we'll see. And the mom...
There's not, there needs to be some sort of brain tumor or something.
Okay, moving on, we're in Drains, now you're up, now, okay, perfect.
Well, good morning all, um, Tyler County, Golden Bank, out of Algaia. I, uh, was informed by Roger Jarks, county supervisor, uh, that Humboldt County had some questions regarding the PAK joint Kasuth One, Palo Alto.
To them.
Can you see?
Yeah.
Blown it up. Perfect. So, I am here to answer any questions, kinda give a rundown of the project, um, let everyone know what's going on. Um, now, just kind of as a disclaimer, I'm the assistant engineer on this one, Kent Roddy is the actual engineer, so, but, Kasuth asked me to stop, so I stopped by. Now, um, I should've grabbed more of these, um, before I came, but if you wanna take a look at this, or pass that around.
Is this one?
It is, yes. Um, the Drains District is Palo Alto Kasuth One, it's, uh, more specifically, this project refers to the main open ditch of that district, which, uh, by length is approximately thirty miles long. Starts up near Fenton, and ends southeast of West Bend, right before the county line. It's actually at the junction between PAK One and Drains District Nine in Kasuth County, um, which is another big district that kinda parallels it. The petition on this was to have, uh, banks repaired, silt and sediment cleaned, and there are some significantly treed areas along the, uh, particularly near Willamore. This, uh, ditch travels right along the outskirts of Willamore, and actually acts as their, all their, uh, storm...
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer, is utilized, they utilize that as their storm sewer. Um, but there's, again, significant trees in not only that area, but, uh, three or four other locations. Um, I can skip over some history here, pretty quick, it's established in, um, nineteen sixteen, uh, as a joint district. Um, there's been some work, and cleanouts, and annexations, so, uh, the history of the district, but one thing that's particularly interesting, um, is that in, let's see, in ninety-five, uh, two parcels, eighty-eight point four acres, in Humboldt County were annexed into PAK One. However, for whatever reason, at that time, it wasn't made a tri-district. Um, the existing schedule that they had at the Kasuth County Courthouse did not have a report with it, um, as to why those were brought in, but it wasn't made a tri-district, which kind of relates a little bit to this report as well, it was found that there were other areas that flow north into the ditch before they come back down south into Humboldt County. Um, we addressed that in the annexation area, um, and, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I've never encountered anything where a district maybe should be a tri-county drainage district. Um, if there's interest in that, I would suggest legal guidance on, on how to make that, how to make that so. Um, so, I guess, other than that, it was approved at the hearing, um, to clean the ditch, remove the trees to the original right-of-way, this ditch is, just because of its length and drainage area, um, its size, as far as width, is rather significant. So, um, it has a wider than typical drainage district. It's, now we're getting into, forgive me, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, because they're all in, they're rods, they measure everything in, in rods, so, um...
This one dumped up by Arthur?
Now, what it involves too is, we have a joint district, uh, it's just with Kasuth, it's joint two, that would be the district coming into Humboldt County, that is coming in two, because obviously we're not a tri-county. Our concern is, with all this work that you described, it's still a district, uh, total ways, but in our case, as it gets out of the district, it remains lots correct to our county, because all this water is coming to.
Right, is that...
I think I'm a little confused.
Is that, is that two, or is it the, the, it's my understanding that it's that area in the northern portion of the county that's undistricted, where you can see the two, uh, drainage systems come together, it's tough to...
It'd be like this...
It's right in, right, yes, correct.
Could you step up a little harder?
Yeah, I need to school.
Um, because just on the north side of the county line, you can see that where the two ditches come together, there are the two drainage systems.
Yeah.
The one that travels north is Drainage District Nine, and the one that travels off to the west is PAK One.
Okay.
So where it enters into Humboldt County, it, it isn't districted, and actually, now that I'm looking here, the eighty-eight acres that were annexed in would be in, uh, what is that?
Eight, J, six?
That, correct.
It'd be in, in this little, this little district.
Right, exactly, yep.
Above there.
Yep. And it appears to just be a little sub-tile district that...
Well, what is it flowing to?
Ultimately, what is it dumping into? It's dumping into...
Five and six?
That, that's correct, right?
Correct.
Right, straight, straight above here, it dumps in.
All right.
I should give you the pointer.
Here, give me the...
We need a laser pointer.
Section? Remember, at the top?
Yeah. It's running here, yeah.
Right.
What tells?
Other side.
And I believe the reason that that was never districted is because there's...
It's the natural stream.
And there's a significant amount of grade on that.
Yeah.
There, there's quite a bit of fall, and actually, if you look at it, it's remained relatively tree-free, and, uh...
Uh, there's quite a few trees, maybe.
And I guess we just examined the, uh, the first couple sections into, into Humboldt County.
Yeah, that's pretty... So they're gonna, are they gonna clean this, the whole thing?
They are, yes. Um, one thing that, right, in the district, yeah, just, just from that junction north. Um, what, not only we've gone into, but one thing that, uh, the board or Roger has brought up, is that anytime they've cleaned portions of ditches, it's just, you just end up making puddles.
Yeah.
Essentially, you know, you, you just, you get to where you stop cleaning, and then...
In your report here, it probably tells you at the outlet, how much silt is in the bottom.
It does, if you, on the D-sheets there, um, it displays the, on the lower half of the page, uh, the dashed line is the existing ground, the red and green bank, uh, lines represent the, uh, right and left, uh, shoulders, uh, the dashed line's existing ground, and the solid black line is the proposed.
So this, as far as cleanup's not gonna affect our county, but it's the water coming down's gonna affect our county.
Yeah, that's our concern.
Yeah, it's gonna make sure I wanna...
We, it is dumping into a, a non-drainage district, district structure.
Yeah.
Because it just, the way this was set up, and like you, why it isn't districted, that whole area, there is natural drainage, that's why there's no district.
Right.
But, our concern is, and especially the people up in the northern part of the county's concerned, and they already have a concern, all this water's coming through an improved drainage system, into an unimproved natural stream.
Right.
And what's gonna happen?
Flooding.
Yeah. We have a bridge just north, uh, not one just north of Bodle, but one further north of Bodle, the lots correct goes under.
Under the highway?
Yeah. That part's there anyway.
Right.
And that's the one that this...
There's a, there's a dam built, basically, on, uh, Egan Bank, and on the Downstream side.
And even though that is not a drainage district.
Right. Because it switches to a natural grid.
Yeah, and it does.
And the county will probably never let you clean the natural stream.
I was gonna say, that would be, to, to go down and do anything there, um, they may allow you to remove obstructions, but you're never...
You can, you can damn a little tree.
Right, but they're never gonna let you straighten it, or...
No, no.
Or make it more uniform, or anything like that.
You can remove blockages.
Right. Now, with regards to this project, it's simply repaired, there's, will be sending no more water than it was ever designed to...
They're taking it back to original design.
Right, correct. And that's actually set in there, the profile was, um, Palo Alto Engineering Office had on, um, file, the original plans, the original profile for this. Um, so it was actually able to be set back in there, um...
The other ditch is thirty-seven miles, and they're cleaning the whole thing?
Cleaning the whole thing.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they, are they adding any pipe at the, at the end also?
They are on the very northern, and...
I see that, the sixty, yeah.
Um, right, and we, we have discussions with, uh, with Kasuth and Palo Alto this afternoon, and I believe, at the A's this afternoon, but that's...
That pipe is a separate project, probably.
It's, the, Kasuth County wanted to do it as part of this project, however, it won't be assessed to the Drainage District, it would be to the, the, it'd be the Secondary Roads Departments of both counties, it actually is the...
For what?
Kasuth and Palo Alto.
Yeah, we're gonna pick on one secondary road.
Yeah. We all stand up in defense of the other guys.
It's the, uh, it's a damaged road culvert, um, that's actually too small, and is overtops the road.
You're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, I just seen...
It, it's just south of Fenton.
So does this mean more?
That's basically the start of it.
Um, not to my knowledge, I don't, I don't have that answer.
The county's just replacing the pipe under the road.
Right.
Right.
Something, has this been assigned, the work has been assigned to...
Is it awarded?
Bid it?
It is not, no. Um, we're, we're doing the final polish of the plans, um, getting approval from the Secondary Roads Departments of both counties, um, for that second division of the project, and then, uh, then it'll go up to bid.
So I assume that, when it comes to ten to levy, that the annexed acres in Humboldt County will be included?
Well, and that's, that's a difficult question, I don't, um...
When they were annexed, was it reclassified then?
For an extent, they'll be paying.
Those, those eighty-eight acres, we, um, never found any, any schedule for them, um, we had an email string in February of this year, um, with the county, to see if they had any information regarding that, uh, those two parcels, and that kinda fell flat a little bit, we never got any answers regarding that. Now, um, the boards did approve annexation and reclassification of this district, um, because on the open ditch, let's see, there was, I believe it was about a quarter of the watershed wasn't being assessed for the benefit that they received, um, and it's around forty-two thousand acres, so you're looking at ten thousand acres that, that weren't being assessed. They were either tile districts that were using it as an outlet, or, um, a majority of the town of Willamore wasn't paying for the, the use, and they were using it as, like I said, their storm sewer. Um, now, when it comes to those areas in Humboldt County, I, I don't know as far as the legal representation, uh, if they could be annexed or assessed, and not have any representation in the form of having this be a three-county district. Um, now, there, the number of acres, just by percentage, would be very, very small. Uh, yeah, um...
It was, it was the legal cost.
Well, and I think, well, and I think that that's the reason that they've been excluded all along, but, um, while I'm here, I figure, please, bring it up, mention it.
Okay, I don't know if that's, are you thinking of reclassification after you're done with this project?
Correct.
Okay. So then, at that time, they'll find out what it's gonna cost, more than likely.
Right, it, it would be a, um, this project would be spread over that new, the new, the new schedule.
So who makes that determination for those, for everybody, what?
Well, chances are, it'll probably be in that thirty dollar an acre range, just going from passive experiences when we clean ditches. And it'll probably be less, 'cause this covers so many acres.
It's, the, the benefit here is that it is an enormous area.
So Webster, Webster, is Kasuth the lead, or is Palo Alto?
Kasuth is control.
What's, can I ask, what's the projection on your...
In the...
For the total, for that big an area?
What are they asking?
I'd just like to know that, how many farmers they'd have come stomping through the door?
Um... Um, in our report, I mean, we were finding this for the final cost estimate, um, and it depends a lot on how many pipes and everything that got replaced, that could really change it.
Yeah.
But we had it at one point nine million.
For how many acres?
For forty-two thousand, and it's a thirty-mile ditch cleanout. Um, with a completion date of, we wanted it as far out as we could to see if the price had come down. Our completion date, I believe, of December first, twenty twenty-one.
Is that a conservative projection?
Yes, yeah, these are, um, almost every one I've seen or put together has been right in the middle of where contractors come in. So, and what, we're fortunate that we've got, there's been a lot of interest in this one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would.
You could go buy yourself a new machine. Buy yourself a job.
But, I, I do wanna say, it's, more water won't be coming based on this project. No more water than, it, it, it won't be generating water.
No, it'll be generating water, it just gets there a little fast.
It may, it may change where your peaks at, um.
It's gotta affect some ways.
This is going to, this is a concern, is that northern here, uh, the colony area. You know, southern Cassuth, northern Humboldt, which is obviously my district, and they're, they're already having issues with the monterain that we've had. With the, without this project.
Right.
And, the thing that we're faced with, now that we've got the schematics here, what it comes into, it leaves the drainage district and goes into a natural stream. We have no jurisdiction over natural streams, cause it's not a drainage district.
That's right. So there's no way to make it through the water?
Well, my question is, and Rick knows, he's especially been on the drainage board, I'm wondering, you can't improve a stream, but you can clean out a stream. There's obstructions, I guarantee there's obstructions in Lots Creek, like you can't believe. Like there is in every stream, river stream you name.
If, if clean obstructions should be part of this project?
Yes.
I think that's what's.
Yes.
To help.
Cause like we're doing on DD-ten out here, we're wanting to go into a natural stream and take out another bridge that's there, and some trees that have fallen in, and they're, they're just basically a dam.
Okay.
So this is the same thing, we wonder if something shouldn't be in this contract of going downstream to clean out.
How far is Lots Creek run before it's dumped in? I mean, I don't.
Long ways. It starts at the colline line, it goes, uh, east of Wilmore before it dumps into the river.
That's pretty long.
And it's meandering, and as all these streams are, and it, it isn't, it isn't a drainage ditch, so it's, there's no design to carry that kind of water, and obviously the rainy events are what really throw a wrench into it, I mentioned the bridge. Ben knows that somewhere along the line, they made some levy-type things years ago, that don't let the creek glow out into the fields.
Right.
But I have to claim to landowners, we have no jurisdiction, we have no jurisdiction over that either, not in a drainage district. So the, the big concern is that water backs up, and it either gets over the road, it gets into their fields, it gets up to their farms, way worse than it ever did. Uh, and they are now, yeah, no more water, depends on how much it rains, but it is gonna get quicker. It's, it's, it's a clean-out project, it's gonna flow quicker, and it's gonna flow quicker into basically an obstruction. So it's gonna, under heavy rain events, like we seem to get regularly, it's gonna create more flooding, is the concern. So, yeah, Rick pretty well summed it up.
Yeah.
I think they need to look at the, what they're dumping it into, if they have, I don't know if there's a limit on distance, or just that you can take the stuff out of the stream.
Yeah, I don't think there's a limit.
But, you know.
But if there is a two-hundred yard distance, you can go in and, and straighten into a natural stream.
Yes. That probably already been done.
Yeah, probably. You can go two-hundred yards into the natural stream, I'd straighten the entrance of it, but blockages like beaver dams, things like that, can be pulled out.
And I can tell you right now, there's beaver dams in Lots Creek. So it's, it's dumping into a son drainage district.
Pulling a beaver dam out of that creek will just be bad.
Just for the trees. The trees that fall in the log dams, if you will, I, I think they need to explore the fact that they're.
Do you have any idea how much elevation fall there is in Lots Creek from the mouth to the outlet? It's, I mean, you mentioned it was significant, I'd. I, I don't, it, it's more than the, um, ten percent, or, uh, a tenth of a percent at the, uh, outlet of this ditch. Um, I, I wanted to say it was almost a point two-five is the number that sticks in my head as far as grade, which is pretty good on, you know, that, that, you can move a lot of water through an open channel with, with that. Um, what I will say is if you'd like obstructions, or, or to know what the condition of that natural stream is and where those, um, blockages may exist, uh, we do have the capacity, we could do a drone flight of that.
That'd be a good idea.
Um, and that, that could be done in just the better part of a day, that goes very, very expensive, very, very quick. Um, fairly inexpensive, uh, just, and then you know, then you, then you don't have to, you know, you can say and see where everything's at.
And coming up on a good time to do it, I would wait till the leaves off trees.
Right, right.
They, they designed, he said, thirty-plus miles of a complete ditch cleanout, and they're just said, well, here's what it dumps into, and taking no consideration into what they're dumping it into.
Right.
Uh, which we always consider, like Rick said, we have, uh.
Well, like you say, it's not an improvement, it's the same ditch, it'll be the ditch that was originally built, so.
Right.
But it will carry more water than it used to, because now that everything's tiled and.
They're gonna get, they're gonna get rid of the obstructions, they're gonna clean out the ditch, so it's gonna move quicker.
Yup.
It's gonna come faster, and it's already, you know, dumping into something that is not designed, it's a stream that's not designed for that amount of water. So, that's a concern, I think that would be a really good idea, if they would do a drone flight and take a look at what they're dumping this water into, and have been dumping it into, like Rick said, it's not changing anything.
No.
But it's still, you know, we've had a look at that on some of our other concerns, uh, your favorite Prairie Creek area.
It needs to be a consideration anyway.
Well, they need, I, I really think they do need to look at it, because that's the, the, you know, the concern, that that they've engineered all this and explained it succinctly and what they're gonna do, but, you know, they've never looked at what it's exploring into, I mean.
And it's significant, and, uh, like I say, we have the, we have the capabilities of, of getting video on that, and.
I think I should see what they're up against.
Right.
I, I'd like to see it done.
Yup.
I agree. I imagine you're gonna have to ask them for permission to do it, because they're the ones who are paying the bills.
Hmm, yeah, I guess I'll have to, I'm not, again, it's, it's kinda odd, because.
It is, cause we're not on the list here.
We're not on the list, we're not on the mailing list.
No, not in the district, not a joint.
Yeah, it isn't like we've been getting a lot of communication on this either.
No. But it's a, this is decided, you know, it's, it's a concern as we speak, and it's gonna be more of a concern, I think, with this improvement, or whatever, it's not improvement.
You know, just.
Just repair, cleaning the ditch, and, you know, none of us can control it, we just seem to have catastrophic rain events, and that's.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, every year, it's worse than the one before it, and, um, and it's.
Crazy, we're in real bad rain, do you expect more of them?
Yeah, a lot of little ones, earlier on, once we got past the early storm mill.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit less.
Well, that's, that's, I guess that's all I would, I would like to hear, or like to request.
Yeah.
If we have the ability to at least see.
Can we get a copy of that also?
Um, I can, uh, yeah, I, I can, I can email it to you, but you may also have that copy right there. Yeah. But I'll, I'll get you an electronic copy of that.
Do we have anything on the annexation for, for nineteen ninety-five? Wasn't that what you said, ninety-five?
Ninety-five, right, correct.
Or is it annexed, or what is it?
Right, it was an annexation, and I don't know if they classified it at that time, they.
Should say it?
They, I would've thought they would've.
Should say it?
But again, well, they, they have the eighty-eight acres or whatever.
Anxed in, but.
Into that district, but they didn't make it a tri-county district, because if you figure eighty-eight acres versus forty-two dollars.
It probably would've cost them several hundred dollars, breaker, just for the legal costs of annex, doing that.
Yeah.
Well, they are, that few acres in Humboldt County does pay for that.
Yeah.
Project.
But it's not. We just don't know what percentage of anything that they.
But when they do the reclassification, they'll get their new basis.
They will get that.
So will you give us a report back or call or something?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll speak with Cassuth County, uh, and probably have to make it joint with Palo Alto regarding the interest in a drone flight and clearing of obstructions, beaver dams, um, any, anything, any, anything in the ditch that could be removed, or that the Corps of Engineers will allow you to remove.
Um, it only benefits this project.
Right, it, it benefits everybody in most, there's no.
Water go way back.
Right, right.
You can do all this thing and done by, you know, whenever, and if that water, if there's all this, uh, repair, the clean out, and pre-remove it, and it gets to a point where it just stops, you didn't gain much, it just, it can't keep moving.
Right, right.
And when is the bed letting supposed to be?
It, we're hopeful that we can file the plans not this Tuesday, not tomorrow, but the week from, a week from Tuesday. Um, and then bed letting, I would think, uh, may, maybe, maybe the first Thursday in November, just to get away from harvest more. Right, right. Um, but, uh, again, as far as the, so I, I will report back on that, um, and then I'm, the biggest thing is that I'm not, I'm not sure as far as with those, if land in a different county could be annexed or should have been annexed without having representation by the board of that county that those parcels were in, you know, you know what I mean?
Where we should be un, unannexed.
Whatever, or if, or if, even if they're in, it wouldn't be right to have given them a benefit at, you know, not be assessing them for anything, you know, because it's.
But this doesn't seem to be final either?
They, they didn't, not, only the fact that there was, only listing them by number and description that they were annexed. Nothing regarding their benefit or anything like that. So it's, it's kind of an interesting, interesting scenario.
So, have you guys already done the LIDAR, determine the new boundaries for the re, the district?
We, we did preliminarily, there's always the, the chance that somebody comes in and they tile across a hill.
Yeah.
Or something like that, um, so, we, we have a better boundary, but I wouldn't say that it's, it's final, um.
Does it include any more of Humboldt?
It does, just, uh, basically that tiled district that's shown on your map up there. Um, because those eighty-eight acres didn't encompass that whole, that whole district. Um, however, again, unless it's made a tri-district, I don't see how that's, how it would be possible to assess them.
Yeah.
We kind of did that with Humboldt, we did this thing that was Humboldt County, we have like, I think it's like forty, less than forty-five acres that are Humboldt County, and we notified, I sent them a bill, they assessed it to their landlord, but it's not up.
Yeah, I don't think that's the point, you don't wanna go down that road.
Well, no, and I don't, just the, just the amount, I, I'm just saying, I don't know, but, uh, obviously if you've done it in the past, it wouldn't be a problem to, to do it here again. And those landowners would be notified, they'd be treated as if they were members of the district, they just wouldn't have their board be, be part of it. Which, which I agree, just the, the amount is just by percentages, so. I don't wanna say insignificant, but it's.
Well, is it our point to have them check out what they're dumping it into, basically? That'd be nice, we're, we're just asking nicely, we have to.
Yeah. No, it's perfect, I will, uh, I will report back to them then, and, uh, when I have an answer, I'll let Trish know and, uh, get that answer back to you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Yeah, reading that description, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no. Uh, thank you for, uh, thanks for entertaining me, and, uh, we'll, uh.
Get you some answers. All right. Any contact information by chance?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, most of the time I'm just right behind camp, so it's like, there's, uh, I'll just throw some, okay, throw some cards out there. If that's, any questions, comments, concerns, anything you, anything additional you'd like me to bring up, uh, my cell's on there too, so, thanks, guys.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else for drainage?
Um, did we, have we made any progress on any of the things we were looking for as far as up there?
Eleven-five?
Yeah.
We talked to her a little bit this morning, she's, I think you need to get ahold of Rick and talk with him, find out just exactly what he's wanting, where we're at.
I was in there last week, we looked at.
I thought we were, um, some money or something that was against that project up there that was, we didn't know what was gonna be put on the, the levy.
Oh, yeah.
And then determined a amount that was on, on the.
That, that was the interest, which is really hard to figure out.
And then we get the whole. Are you talking what Rick had for the complicated number, or are you talking about the first half of the levy that was?
I'm talking about, Rick told us in his report that you had some money on the books from previous.
Previous.
Previous stuff that he didn't, wasn't able to.
He didn't know what that was.
Put into the report, and we didn't know, we're trying to get a ballpark.
That was stuff that was not part of the project, so it wasn't included in the total project cost, so.
So as we're gathering this stuff together and we try to figure the, cause that's the group, that's the only thing they're really here for, was to try to hit some ballpark for us and.
They wanna pay their interest.
Yeah, they want this meter to slow down.
Yeah.
Pay us before, late in the year.
You wanna get all the records, get all the information.
Yeah, they don't want six months of interest.
Therefore, they would have something for next meeting.
Well, whatever her timeframe, I mean, they wanted on, kind of on the fast track, as opposed to another month down the road. The other question I had for you, Rick, was you talked about out here by the hospital.
Yes.
Did you take that?
I was gone all last week, but I'm hoping to go there this week, I was gonna get a list from Trish, the landowners along the stream out here, and take it to, uh, the attorney and see if they can write up us a easement agreement.
Easement, so that we can.
Present it to the landlord.
Present it.
And get it taken care of.
And I still believe that on that, rather than just say we're gonna go in there and do a clean.
Slash and burn.
Along the edge, yeah, slash, burn, let's bid it, see where we're at, so that we know what we're gonna spend.
Yeah, or at least have a, a dollar amount.
Somewhat closer idea as to what we're.
That's a good idea.
And welcome back, by the way.
Yeah.
The easement?
Easement, okay.
Sorry.
Come on, come on, you're near it. Come on, come on, you're near it. No.
Too much right now.
But I'm like, oh, what was that word? Um, yeah, glad to be back. Glad to be feeling better.
That's good. Glad you're minus your shell.
Okay, is there anything else on drainage? If not, motion go up.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Back out of drainage. Thank you.
Thank God.
I've been early the last couple of weeks.
You did all have your thoughts as well, but the top of our list is...
It was all on private property.
Yep, looks like it.
Do you want to check on that?
I, I can take a look at it, but we won't do any of the work.
Right.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I said I'd take a look and we'll talk to you guys and see what you want to do, so just make sure it's on right away. When you're over that way sometimes.
Okay, but, and I wouldn't know what that district has for, for a drainage easement. I'd have to talk to Trish to find out if, if the spoils are, are on the drainage district easement with the property.
That's kind of a funny shade. At the end there, it swept off pretty good. It was within six foot of the road and it was starting to...
Yeah, and it sounds like it was a, a natural sand seam that they excavated out and then put clay in.
Said he got some riprap in there and looked it good.
Okay.
Wanted to dress it just a little more, but he worried about the spoils because they didn't want them.
Yeah, which I, I guess, uh...
Okay.
All right.
Anybody got anything else to say? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on. Approval of cancellation of homestead military and disabled veterans application.
We got a little progress on that.
Now you got something. Um, these are the cancellations. We've got kind of a little review of how many, because somebody always asks, how many we canceled and how many we added.
All right, ask it on...
Oh, oh. Let me get the...
These are cancellations and, um, homestead and military cancellations. We had a hundred and forty-two homesteads, thirty-three militaries that we canceled. I don't know if you want to, I don't know if you want to see these or not.
Not really.
No, okay. Those are Peggy then. And then, um...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What's a DAV?
Disabled Veterans Homestead.
Disabled Veterans Homestead.
Mm-hmm, I'll get to that.
Well, I'd just like to get the terminology.
Yes. Um, these are the new homesteads. We added eighty-eight. Um, and eleven militaries we added. We canceled two disabled veterans exemptions and added three. Actually, one of the additions and one of the removals was they moved from one place to a different place.
So you canceled one of that.
Yeah, yeah.
In order to get that DAV, that's got to be a hundred percent disabled, to the veterans.
Yes. And then their property tax, they pay nine zero.
Well, these are criteria that is set up through the government, set up through, I mean, this isn't...
Yeah, right. That's correct. Um, we get a form that they've filled out and been signed by someone else.
And then you go through the process of verifying that everything is according to what they filled out.
Yes, that's correct. These are new DAVs. Um, this one is a homestead this guy signed up for, and let me pass that one out. We have no voter registration in Humboldt County, no vehicles in his name in Humboldt County, no driver's license, no nothing. So we're kind of thinking, we're...
What's that?
Yes, um, disallowance. Well, that's kind of our recommendation. You, you know, if you want to overrule that, that's fine, but, um...
Talking about somebody who doesn't even live in Humboldt County?
So basically, they, they own the property, but they don't live here.
Right.
And you got, and you're supposed to live here to get the exemption.
Um, they probably are here occasionally on this property, but, um, I don't know that I would consider it a homestead. Correct.
But they're building a house on it?
No, no.
That's the one I'm thinking of.
Okay, no. It's there.
Oh, the house is already there?
It's a hotel. It's a motel. It's a Motel Eight.
Oh, because I was trying to think, I knew that it was around on my, somewhere. Because I was close to, you know, I was like, wait a minute, I couldn't figure out where it was.
Yeah, okay. And they do have like two rooms that are opened up and, um...
Like a home quarters.
Yeah, yeah.
People live there.
Yeah, it's, um, there's, I don't know, kitchen area there.
It's like when they come, for a while they stay there and then they go back to.
Yeah, and, and I think he probably has other properties up, you know, on other counties.
So I'd disallow that one unless they want to come back and argue their case.
Okay, yeah, that's... I'll just...
So do we need a motion, all of them together, Peggy? Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Um, I would approve the cancellations of the homestead, military, disabled veterans that were presented to us by Linda.
A second. And on the addition, the new addition?
And the additions as well, sorry. You know, you messed that up. It was open the old guy.
You almost got to say approve the approval.
Yeah.
The new ones and the addition, cancel it.
I said so much for you.
Sandy, Sandy, I stumbled through it.
How about the ones for the, that you think for the disallowance? Did you guys do that? Did I miss that?
No.
Well, we said addition, addition.
Well, that's a disallowance. We're not allowing that.
Yeah, well, I...
So we do try to do them.
Do you do a motion for that?
I...
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to disallow the one that you presented to us.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, yeah. Unless he can prove to us otherwise.
I'll second that, by the way.
I agree.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, both? Carry.
Um, another thing I might just mention while I'm sitting here is, you know, we had a tentative equalization order on multi-residential property. And I went to Des Moines last Thursday and had my hearing with the Department of Revenue on, um, appealing that order. And I'm very optimistic, very. Um, we should get an answer this week sometime, so we'll see.
Well, if you get that, would you either give it to Peggy and at least give us, uh, some type of notice, yay, we are good or...
Yeah, I'll let you know.
I appreciate it.
Um, they did a, they hired some guy, I don't know where he's from, to do some modeling for these types of properties, and, um, just really kind of an uproar in the whole state over it. And, um, like our county had no sales.
Yeah, so how do you, how do you have comparables?
Yeah, and the only sale that we had was a contract sale, and that showed our median at a hundred and sixty-three, which awful. I mean, we're way high on that piece of property. So I told the, uh, department, I said, that's the true indication and I should be lowering them. But that's only one sale and it's also a contract sale, so they're not used anyway. But, um, um, they're rethinking now all of them, so I'll let you know what happened, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that date and time for the budget amendment?
You want this too? Yep, it is. I just wanted one to read off of.
Tentative date of October seventh, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That would work. Uh, that's the date for the budget amendment. Let's see, October seventh? Uh, that looks about as good as any. I'd make a motion to set the date and time for the budget amendment as stated as October seventh at eight thirty-five AM.
I would second.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
We're all still scratching here. You're doing your digital stuff there.
Yeah.
This I always have...
This way, I can just cross it off.
Any other discussion on the budget amendment?
I'll do your teaching all this stuff before, right, Rick?
We should have everything in place.
Okay, approved promotion of Jennifer Wykoff to full-time jailer from part-time jailer affecting ten-one.
Yep.
Written to the committee official. So I will make a motion to make it official.
I'll make a motion to, um, make Jennifer Wykoff to full-time jailer from part-time effective ten-one at a rate of seventeen sixty per hour.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Okay, committee report.
Hey, well, I need to go back to August twenty-sixth, Monday, August twenty-sixth.
We were all here. Oh, I'm sorry, it was just...
You weren't at this meeting though, but you could have come with me. I had a building families meeting at three PM, uh, over in Clarion, and then I also attended the Farm Bureau supper that evening out at the, uh, winery. Meeting, and I wasn't here last week, so that's all I have for official committee report.
I had no meetings this last week because I was gone.
I did the mobile food pantry on Wednesday night, um, down Fairgrounds, a hundred and twenty-eight families, three hundred and twenty-three individuals. Um, a great crowd of, of, uh, people and also a lot of help, so it went, uh, really pretty smooth. Other than the fact that some of the people towards the end of the line wondered, you know, is this how you do it? Well, yeah, and that's the reason why people come early, because it's, um, first come, first served. They wanted to know if we couldn't redo that. Well, if you're at the end of the line, make it earlier, but... So that's just the way they have it set up and that's the way it's run, so, but there was a lot of, lots of...
I suppose some items were gone if they wanted.
Yeah, because as they run out, you just, no, you really can't, because some days we...
You don't want it all left over.
Right, and if it's left over, we take up to the food pantry. We've had slow numbers that we end up having to have to pick up load up to the food pantry, so...
I have a question for you on the food pantry. We get, obviously, we go in the churches, I'm sure a lot of churches do this. They'll put in that each month they request different items.
Yep.
How are they doing with the items they request? Are they getting, there must be some method to that.
Right, I know ours for this month is canned soup, but Zion, um, and then I think next month is, I don't know if it's toiletries or, uh, whatever, but...
We'll get a notice each month that the food pantry requests.
Sure.
Are they, I guess, I didn't, you know, know if you've ever checked, are they doing okay? Because apparently they request that, you know, they, whatever it is.
On Wednesday, or Wednesday, we have our ministerial meeting, see, because then the stuff is brought to the church and then the church will...
Well, you can drop it off at the food pantry, they'll set when they're there.
Right, so I will check and see, and I can also talk to Becky, visit with her and see what...
It's probably, I just always look at that and think, well, there must be a reason because they need to restock or have these certain items on hand. And I was just curious and...
Right, and we're still in the hunt looking for new facilities so that we can expand because we're all either cramped or, you know, towards the end of the month, then you're lacking in those things that the churches bring or individuals bring, um, so they're still doing a lot of, a lot of help through there, so...
Speaking of the ministerials, I was talking to Bennett and I was a couple three weeks ago, like, um, he was in a private, he was supposed to have been invited. I don't know if that would be something, you might want to, yeah, I really, yeah, I don't even know, like, I was maybe, and I don't know if anybody came up on it, but I'm just thinking of how to reach the hole.
All right.
But I was going to go into, um, I helped unload the pantry truck last, the ninth, um, and then on the tenth, I had a, um, CSS conference call. They did a, a conference call with all of us because they wanted to get with us before we have our main meeting next week. It's the week after, I think, it's the week after, I think. But anyway, um, on Cassouche County, Cassouche County in arbitration has agreed to pay
their past dues, but of course, they don't want to be able to...
Ignore you?
Yeah, but they are upping their, to get this paid, they're like, really, it's like thirty-five dollars, I think it's thirty-five, eighteen or something like that is for, and they have to up those, I think it's like fifty-five dollars to be able to make, because the last few years, they, they went from a twenty-five to, and then one year it was fifteen, that they, yeah, assessed the people. So they're really having to bump up to, to make that. But of course, we're all allowed the legal fees. Everybody, on legal arbitration, you have to pay your own legal fees, so that, and that's kind of, everybody complained about that a lot. But anyway, it was positive conference call and then we'll find out more when we have our meeting on the twenty-fifth. That's all I have.
Okay, on the ninth, I unloaded the food truck, the food pantry. Uh, Wednesday the eleventh, I was out for the mobile food truck. And, uh, thirty...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I told them not to break them. I seen one crack them. Uh, Thursday, I was supposed to have an EMA meeting, executive meeting, and that got canceled. And I've been working with John. We've got two applications in. Uh, John hasn't got back to me yet on them. Uh, they want to put car junkyards in the county, one up by Hardy and one out western of High School. So we'll have a hearing on them coming up. I think it's, uh, nineteenth. We'll have a hearing on them. That's all I had.
I have a question, Peggy. When we accept, and I'm going back to Ben's reference, those two motor patrol that we bought, would, do we have the ability to ask, um, where these things are coming from?
Oh.
I mean, yeah, when we, when we...
Do we get a bid, I mean?
Get a bid from them? Do we have the ability to say, do these come, are these coming from South America or are they, are they built in the United States? So that we know that, I mean, if we were in dire need of these, I guess I just didn't know what the...
Why is John here and go get it from Des Moines or...
Yeah, I think we have every right to ask that. Yeah, I think we have every right to ask that, you know, but then, I think what happened on these motor patrols was they were ordered correctly and then when they put them together, they put the wrong sized mold boards on them. And they didn't wanna take those off, so if you remember, Ben told us that that delayed, that's where the parts of the layers come. Well, they just had to wait for the ones with the right size, 'cause they heard them, said, "This is what we want." And then they said, "Oh, hey, we got your things on," and then they looked at the specifications, it wasn't the right specs.
Right.
So that's, they pushed it back.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I agree with Bruce, I mean, you, this stuff takes forever in a day.
Ship it alone from over there, you'd...
Yeah.
You gotta... Anything, but I think that's all it is, is for the laborers, so much cheaper they can, really, it's not, they get, um, I don't know, can't think of what it was, bearings or something, China, because they can make them over there, do something, now they're over there, but something they can do here, they don't here. But, you know, you can, they can order over there, ship them, and still take their shipping and it's still cheaper than what people can do there at the plant. But eventually, that's gonna catch us, I don't know if you guys saw the news report on antibiotics? They, no, no one in the United States manufactures antibiotics anymore, they're all over in China.
Really?
If China ever wanted to hold that off of us, the hospitals would be out within two months.
Wow, that's a scary thought.
It is very scary, and we own, I mean, it's cost us more money to manufacture those too, but we gotta start thinking long-term.
Be more self-sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay, Peggy's got some stuff for us here.
Several more things on the oil security, if you've been following the news at all, um, getting quite heated.
Sounds like they just took all their cash and left.
Yeah, it does, mm-hmm, it does. Um, you'll be talking to Ben today about safety, he talked about last week about the report from the state, we need to have you sign off on it, which is in the back, we know that we received it and we will make whatever changes we need to. Um, IMWCA has a board, they have some people who are running on that board, I didn't know, we get one ballot, um, I didn't know if he wanted me to go ahead, you who cast the ballot, or I'll let you look at the names, if you see someone on there, the two know, um, if you wanna vote for them, but we'll have to have Dave signature on it.
I would think that you have probably a better understanding of that, Peggy, that's my opinion.
I do know one of the people that are running, but I think they're voting for, yeah, they're voting for three, so unless you know someone else with name to be added, okay, this is done.
I'm willing to let you do it.
Yeah, fine.
And, um, BBs have completed the air conditioner up on the roof, they came, uh, Monday and started, Tuesday they had the crane here, that lifted up on the roof, and even though the ground was very wet, 'cause it rained less than that morning, they put some good support underneath it and it didn't do too much damage to the yard. So what they got up there, they took off, they were done by Thursday, and Friday they were putting the latest depth backward.
Also, they...
Oh, wow. So, I don't know if they're using it today, I haven't asked them yet.
Would you, could we see if we made a difference in the, with part coming?
Yeah, 'cause we were hoping for quiet and we were hoping for water.
Right. Well, I'd rather do it now than wait till next summer and we've already got nine, seven or eight months that...
So this is BB's bill for the work, um, they would like to get paid for that, I told them we paid bills on the twenty-third, for our next meeting.
Yeah. So that'll be on next week's claims.
Yep, yep. Twenty-three thousand. And that's the estimate.
Twenty-five, five, three?
Twenty-one, five, okay. Um, when we did the special election, we, uh, did our canvas, but I forgot how you guys signed the abstract, the abstract.
If anyone see that.
Yeah, it's good.
And the certificate will be for the chairman's side. And I'll have you all pay that day, so we can do that. When we do our budget amendment, we know we need to man conservation because of that check that came through for the, um, canvas, and now it's time to start paying for those bills, so that'll be one of them on there. Um, through the courthouse budget, we paid for, we'll be paying for the air conditioner, we did the waterproofing outside and that was supposed to come out of last year's budget, but they didn't get it done until this year, so we'll have to pull that money from this year until this year. And then we'll have Dean's amendment on there for the jail, so we'll have a few things to cover.
So...
And then possibly...
Something we'll need, um, hopefully.
Possibly the Motorola.
Yeah, yeah, that too.
So will we check, or will you check, or will some of us, somebody check to see if they're having court?
Sure.
In the next few days and give us a report back to make sure that everything's working properly?
And that I can do a call up there and...
That way we at least know that, I mean, I don't wanna wait till next July to find out that we're still doing what...
Yeah, it isn't working.
Why don't I check while you're discussing with Ben?
That would work.
Well, that's why John and I have been playing tag, because he keeps wandering all over, freaking out with noise, they've been working in his office up there in the back closet, so...
All right, thanks.
Anything else to come forward aboard?
Well, this is just an FYI, I don't know, Bill Mansky sent a nice map of the Agwell closure, uh, all the same, uh, area, and where we met with Secretary Agriculture. And just wrote back that, you know, it's private, but, uh, it was a nice project and there's, we were out there and talked to Mike Nag, I think that was at least positive. Yeah, so it was a good thing, but I don't know if anybody else got that, but if you wanted to see what the completed map looked like, but...
So all that is completed? It's all done, done, done?
Yeah.
Yeah, very nice, very, it's nice, it worked, that, that worked well.
That seemed like a long, yeah, still once. It wasn't the change and they had to move.
They found a bane of rock.
Bane of rock.
And they filled out some rock and it was kind of a, kind of a headache, but rock was the problem.
Right, but I appreciate Bill, the news...
Two other things, like Dave said, ultimately, the very good project.
Another one off our list.
Yep.
One business left to go.
That's why we've been talking to the Secretary of Agriculture, hopefully he took that back to his people.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else to come forward aboard?
Oh, just wanted to put, note the, some cameras back up and running, everything's getting moved, there were a couple of meetings there that didn't get recorded, um, because something was not hooked up with the camera, and I got a new computer and the net threw things off, so now we've got everything back on and everything seems to be, last couple of meetings I loaded with the, so we should be back up and running the way we should be. Um, the website, I've been in touch with Billy, who's assisting us, and he had me do some work last week and then we have some more to do this week, and we'll see how, so we're progressing anyway, now it just goes with...
Still moving forward.
Moving forward. They say we're close, so...
Is it like maybe this year yet?
I would hope so, but they don't give you any guarantees, they just say we're close.
Okay.
We're close as Dean's close?
And my former father-in-law, Mr. Face, passed away, now, uh, close, he's only getting horseshooting.
Hang your end, right. I'd rather try to catch the horseshoe.
Yeah, I know.
That's true. Thank you, Mr. Durn, second.
Uh, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.